All right, good evening. Now I'd like to bring the regular evening meeting of Township of Langley Council to order. And before I move on, I'd like to welcome the nursing students from Quandlin Polytechnic University and I believe Connie, where's Connie?
Connie's there.
Oh, there you are.
The nurses are here, okay.
Yes, welcome here. I'm being distracted. Do you do that in class, walk around behind the instructor, probably all the time?
Maybe they can help Davis with this call.
Just about got him. And you're welcome here. I hope you enjoy what you do. I know you come every, every class comes out at least once, is that correct Connie? Yeah, great. Well, great. Okay. So with that, I need a motion to adopt and receive the gen items. And if we recall, the delegation from the afternoon has been moved to D3. So with that, Councillor Fox moves it. And Secundar, Councillor Arneson, all those in favor, opposed, carried. Next item is the adoption of the minutes, the regular evening council meeting of October 23rd. Have a motion please. Councillor Qualley, Secundar. Councillor Davis, any errors or missions? All those in favor, opposed and carried. Thank you. We have one presentation, the Community Energy Association. Mr. Pat Bell is here, or sorry, Ms. Pat Bell. Thank you. And this is for the Community Energy Association to present an honorable mention Climate and Energy Action Award to the Township of Langley for its green municipal investment program. I'll put it on.
Thank you.
There you are, you're on.
Thank you. I'm very pleased to be here this evening to present the honorable mention for corporate operations to the Township of Langley. As you know, CEA is the trusted independent advisor to BC local governments, and we have been for over 20 years. And we like to accelerate climate action through people and projects. And one of the ways that we do this is by recognizing achievement. We're very pleased, as you can see, we have a number of local government members that support Community Energy Association, and we support them through the processes that we do. And as a recipient of a Climate and Energy Action Award, the Township of Langley will receive one free year of membership with the Community Energy Association. And this includes attending our quarterly meetings and receiving our quarterly newsletter and benefiting from all the connections that we have. And staff will be invited to our next meeting in November 28th. So one of the benefits that you receive by attending our meetings, which can also, you can come in on a teleconference, is the benefits of all of the partners we have at the table. So including the local government members, we have the Urban Development Institute, all the energy utilities in BC, Federation of Canadian Municipalities, Real Estate Foundation, UBCM. All of these people come to the table, and it's a really great way to find out what's going on. We're also the regional climate advisor for the Federation of Canadian Municipalities, partner for Climate Protection Program. And what this means is that we are paid for the next two to four years to help BC local governments who are participating in that program move forward with their milestones. Township of Langley has been a member since 2001, and you have hit all of your corporate milestones, milestones one to five, and you have achieved milestones one to four on the community side. So we are available, if you want to start filing reports for milestone five, we are available to file those for you for free. So I just want to take a moment to celebrate some of the other things that Langley has been doing. You have achieved carbon neutrality in your corporate operations since 2014. You have the Waterwise Program, the Green Cart Program, the Travel Smart Program. You've put a significant amount of efforts into establishing electric vehicle charging infrastructure, and you've had the green building rebate program for some time now. And I can tell you that I have referred to that program myself in at least six presentations to other local governments, because it's a really excellent example. And this is one of the reasons why we recognize Langley's leadership. So now I'd like to present the award. So from all of the compelling 2017 award applications we received, our independent judging panel selected Township of Langley for the honorable mention in the Corporate Operations category because you have created a self-sustaining fund which supports corporate facility energy use reductions and allows you to implement greenhouse gas emission reductions and other sustainability projects throughout the whole community. By providing funds for both research and capital projects, your innovative investment program allows the township to provide the necessary amenities that you need for such a fast-growing community, at the same time while reducing emissions. And this is a huge accomplishment. The judges specifically noted that you are already doing energy audits, a biodiesel pilot, electric vehicle charging infrastructure, and renewable energy studies using the funds from this program. So they were very impressed with your implementation efforts. The municipal green investment fund is going to provide a very inspiring example for communities, not only in BC but across Canada. And funding programs are one of the key things I'm emphasizing in presentations to others because it allows you to do year-on-year projects and to continue to advance your agenda. And as promised, all the winners this year will be featured in a Municipal World Magazine article in December. So I'll make sure your staff get a copy of that article. So once again, on behalf of the Community Energy Association and all our cosponsors, which is Fortis BC, BC Hydro, Real Estate Foundation of BC, the Province of BC, and UBCM, I congratulate you on this inspiring achievement. And I would now like to invite Mayor Froze and council down to receive the 2017 Climate and Energy Action Award Honorable Mention for Corporate Operations.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Certainly, council is very proud of the achievements, but it wouldn't happen without our great staff who take our policies and put them into action. And thank you very much to all of our staff for making this happen, and appreciate the recognition for all the work that we do. Thank you. All right, the next thing on the agenda are delegations, and the first delegation is Barbara Chu. And if she could please come forward? And if you could just provide your name and where you live, and you'll have five minutes for your delegation.
Good.
I'll wait till you're set up.
Do you know where that is, Wendy?
That's that. Ms. Barbara, I'll help you.
In any case, I can start, Mr. Mayor. Counselors, thank you for agreeing to listen to our issues. I am Dr. Barbara Tanita Chu. I live at 977-196A Street. I'm here with, yes, oh, and it's not showing up. Looks like we've got headlines. We'll see.
You just wait, wait, hold on.
It's started with a blue background at some point. I'll live with the map, that's, that's fine. Our neighbor, I've outlined him in red there, is applying to subdivide that property into two roughly square pieces. The bottom end enters onto Eighth Avenue, and at the top, he has entrance from the cul-de-sac at 196A Street. We'd welcome another family on the cul-de-sac, that's not a problem. What we have a problem with is that the township, in order to approve this subdivision, is asking that he build a road that would become 10th Avenue across the northern boundary of his property. When I first moved to the area about 15 years ago, I met the neighbors, and one of the first things they told me was, don't go walking on the cul-de-sac at night, there's drug deals happening out there. And when you walk in with a teenage daughter and two younger children, that's not exactly what you want to hear. Over the years, does it work? Oh, yes. You can't read anything. The neighbors have really worked to deal with that sort of problem. Dave's property, they've put in what amounts to a street light, it's a motion-sensitive light in the corner of the property, so it lights the area up. There were still people coming by, there's no parking signs went in, didn't do a thing. He interrupted what appears to be prostitution happening, they just pull into the bushes in the road allowance, and finally, thank you township people, put up barricades basically blocking the end of the road. And that seems to have settled down everything except the occasional male theft, and I'm not sure how we're going to deal with that. In any case, we think another house on the cul-de-sac would help keep it busy, discourage that sort of activity, but a partial 10th Avenue just gives them more room to do their We hand, yes, it's not going to show you anything that I can tell. We reviewed the application, and one of the things that came through on one of the letters was that ALC has turned down a request to extend 10th Avenue through properties that are further east towards 200th Street from our cul-de-sac. So we're thinking, if you can't extend it any further, there's really no point putting the dead end in. Will the Google Earth one come up?
Apparently not. There we go.
Oh, we do have Google Earth. The arrows are pointing to a couple of structures that I believe will be a problem if you did extend. The orange line would be 10th Avenue. The first of those is this retaining wall, which if you do an extreme close-up, probably there's room for a road there, but there's also a building intruding onto it. And from the other end, from 200th Street, Lenny and his wife probably aren't going to want cars right outside their bedroom window. He also has a shop further back on the property, which is about that close to the property line. And the next one has words, oh, this is from the environmental thing, study that was done on the land. There's swales that run from the north towards the south and then east to west across the property. They link into Jacobson Creek, which then leaks into the Little Campbell River, and as you know, that's a salmon-bearing stream. The Semiamu Game Club are quite proud of the hatchery and the amount of salmon they have spawning there. And it's also home to the endangered sailfish sucker. Environmental would prefer if this water could remain intact, there's water in those swales most of the summer, but roads say, if you've got a road that comes to here, we need that drainage pipe down to Eighth Avenue. So the fish would lose some of their water supply. Your staff contend that 10th Avenue would allow you not to have an extended long cul-de-sac, which they find undesirable. We're saying it doesn't look like in the near future you're actually going to be able to complete 10th Avenue, so we don't think the stub should be put there at this point in time. Yes, this is the entrance onto the subject property from 196A. They've moved gravel in there so that they can dig a well, and there's an excavator there that they use to bring the gravel in. So I'm thinking the only people that are really going to get a lot of benefit out of this are the gravel suppliers, because it's going to take a lot of gravel roadbed to create 10th Avenue. The land is sloped, it's not going to be that deep at the eastern boundary, but that's where we are.
Thank you.
In conclusion, save Mr. Mar a lot of money building a road that goes to nowhere, save our neighborhood a place for crime to happen, and help keep the fish wet during the summer months. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that. Thank you.
And I'm sorry that printing didn't come out.
Sorry, the councillors just pushed her buttons to speak to, we'd like to ask some questions. Councillor Richter.
Yeah, so you're saying that the road is never going to go through then to 200th Street?
I don't know if, I don't know the source of the Agricultural Land Commission decision that a further east property couldn't build a road, and I don't know how written in stone those decisions are. At some point, would it be allowed? Yes. Is it likely in the next five years, 10 years, 50 years? I don't know.
Oh, yeah, because one of the issues that we wrestle with is when people are developing properties, the road is like a communal thing.
It is, yeah.
So if they don't build it when they're developing, then all the taxpayers end up on the hook for it down the road. Can you think of anything that might help us get around that?
I know at one, at one point, it was suggested, make an estimate what it costs and put it in the pot for the future. I know there's, you don't know when the future is or what the price will be in the future, but that's, that's one suggestion that's come up. I don't know how practical it is.
Okay, so the way the road is right now, it's just, it's just going to come straight down and feed into this property then? If we didn't require it to be built across the top?
Oh, yeah, 196A abuts his property. He could put a laneway directly off of it. I'm not, and that's, I mean, that's at least an entrance, but it was put there to allow well-drilling equipment on the property.
Thank you. Councillor Arneson.
Yes, thank you very much for coming. I know myself and probably some other councillors and staff have been out to look at the situation and actually did some mitigation there to try and prevent some of the problems that you're having. So I guess my question through your worship to staff at this point is, is this a statutory requirement for access and egress to this new subdivision? Is that an actual requirement, or could it be waived for any reason?
Mr. Seffy.
Your worship, thank you. The requirements are pursuant to bylaw, your worship. So staff, the approving officer, in considering the application for subdivision, which was approved by the Land Commission, considers the provisions of the bylaw approved by council in determining what the requirements are in this particular case. Those include, the requirements include extension of 10th Avenue to the east.
Okay, thank you. And, but just a thought that perhaps there could be some opportunity to take this roadway, should it be going through to the degree that it will be at this point, and try and create some mitigation there to curtail opportunities in whatever way you could to stop people from using it for these kind of activities that were referenced.
Your worship, I don't know if there was a question there?
Oh, sorry, that was a question. I should have raised my voice at the end.
Was a question, can you repeat the question for Mrs. Seffy?
Okay. So if this is a requirement, then are, is staff aware of any opportunities that might be available to try and mitigate opportunities for people to be able to misuse this portion of the road?
Your worship, thank you. The issues are related to, I guess, RCMP for the most part that have been expressed. Staff has consulted with the RCMP in terms of what could be done, and as council heard and those of council, those members of council who've been to the site are aware, it's an existing dead-end road that is over length. And I guess one of the considerations, I don't know if we would actually address the concerns, but one of the considerations has been to install no post-barriers at some point to prevent entry to the remainder of 10th Avenue or what will be 10th Avenue to the east at some point while providing access to the newly created lots. So that was something that was considered, installation of no post-barriers, concrete barriers to prevent access.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. I think it's helpful for the community to recognize that there's still some opportunities to potentially finesse this plan.
Thanks. Councillor Richter.
Yeah, just a follow-up question. So you had problems originally, there was some mitigating things done to stop the problems. And how long have the problems been stopped, and are you seeing any emergence of a new cast of characters maybe coming in to cause problems?
Counselor, if I could step in to answer that question. My name is Buzz Denroch. I'm also a neighbor at the end of 196A at 1011, 196A, and our driveway abuts right where the road ends. We moved on to our property on December the 4th of 215, and sometime around early July, Mayor Froze and Ms. Arneson came out and observed and actually responded incredibly quickly, I might add, to our concerns of activity on that street. In the six months during that period, I personally witnessed nine or 10 times at Pitch Black, where there would just be unknown cars parked there. I was concerned for my wife, I was concerned for my children coming at dark, because you just, we just don't know. I have not personally found, but neighbors beside me who have been there for 38 years have continually found condoms and needles, and it's just, it's just not a safe environment. I would implore this council to rethink the design. If it's too late for that, and it well may be, I would stand with Ms. Arneson and just please ask you guys to do some mitigation so that we can keep our cul-de-sac as serene and quaint and quiet as it is and allow the developer full access to his subdivision. None of our neighbors, nobody on the street that I've talked to has opposed the subdivision, period. We would like the access somewhere off where the gravel has already been poured and they're putting a well in, and perhaps with access to the road put aside for later when the plan and the ability to push it through to 200, they're closer to completion. But our concern is we will have a 200 or 300 meter long road to the middle of a farm field, and it's a chore for the RCMP and probably one they would not welcome. I think by either not building it until we can push, until you can push the road through, or putting some pretty severe mitigation. Once we place the barriers there, which I really give thanks to this council for moving so quickly on that, the activity stopped. We have seen zero, except for the occasional male theft, but that has nothing to do with our concerns, zero in the year and a half since then. And my fear is now with a longer, darker, more obscure road that directly impacts my friends, the Newtons, and runs right parallel to their property, we're inviting all sorts of nefarious activity. And I'm sure the RCMP would say, let's just not create the problem in the first place. We would really thank this council for listening to us. We applaud your actions to date. We are deeply thankful for the mitigation that you did, and we would ask you just to continue that, and if possible, to redesign the access. That's it for me.
Just one last question.
Sure.
The, the new property that's being built, is it just one property or is it two?
As far as I know, it's one property with access from
From your side.
From 196A. And one from 8th.
Gotcha.
So this huge long road for one driveway.
Thank you very much. Yeah, thanks.
Thank you.
All right, next delegation is Kevin Connolly, and Kevin's here.
Good evening. My name is Kevin Connolly. I'm at 268-3725A Avenue in Alda Grove. My request tonight is quite simple, road repair. That's it, nothing to do with the development or rezoning application. It's from 24th Avenue at 264th East to 268. The area from 24th to 268th and east and north has grown substantially, and the traffic has grown as well, and the wear and tear on the road is, I think you can see on the pictures that were provided, is fairly substantial and actually are now out of date because they took them last week, and as of Sunday morning, a bunch of those potholes have come out again. Now, having said that, the Township road crews have been excellent in getting out very quickly to fill the potholes, but if you look at the pictures, I'm assuming you have them?
Yeah, we do.
Okay, great. Do we have them, do we have them here?
They're on the, they're in the agenda. If you go to the delegation request, and attach the delegation request to the photos. I don't have the page number.
HD2, D2, H1.
I'll just pause it and let council catch up.
Sure, no problem. Just let me know when you're ready.
Yeah, we got them.
Oh, good? Thank you. So the wear and tear on the road is, has grown substantially. Now, I've lived in the area for almost 13 years. We love it, and the growth of the housing and everything in the area has actually helped, and the community is strong and good supporters of the area. So we have no issues there. We know that money is an issue. We're not asking for curbing, additional lighting, or even sidewalks. We're just asking to fix the road. So if you look at the pictures from 24th Avenue going east, about the first 100 feet is the vast majority of the problem. After that, sections of the road could be cut out five feet wide, 20, 25 feet long, and replaced, and the road would be fine until such time down the road. I know there's development ideas farther down the road that would help that. So we're not asking for the road, we're just asking for it to be repaired. And if you look at pictures three and four, I'm not sure what order you have, the west side of 24th Avenue was repaired that way. So there's your solutions. The first part, the road was dug up and repaired completely. Not very much, we're not talking four, five, six blocks, we're just talking for the majority of it to be fixed. And then after that, select patches, which I'm sure the Township Engineering Department would be more than happy to, to, you know, authorize, just to get the road back up to speed. On some of those pictures, you'll see where people are actually driving around the potholes to go onto 264th, and you'll see that they're actually driving right off the road and into the dirt to avoid the potholes. So it is becoming a hazard, not only for cars, cyclists, because lots of people still use it, there is rural area there that we enjoy, and pedestrians now, because just up the road is a church, they take, they have weddings there and so on and so forth. So we're just asking for your consideration to see if you can get it into the 2018 fiscal budget, and obviously not now, because we just had our snow, among other things, and hopefully in the spring, make the necessary repairs to fix it. Thank you.
I do have some questions from council.
Great.
Councillor Fox.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Connolly, for coming. I know this area particularly well, and I concur that the road is in pretty rough shape. We have had it in the budget, I think you and I talked about that for the last couple of years, and it's never made the cut, so to speak. I did want to ask through you, your worship, to Mr. Seffy, one of the things I brought up a number of, a couple of times, and not too distant fast, was that actual southeast corner where if a person's turning right off of 264th onto 24th Avenue, they have to work hard to miss the ditch. Actually, it's a, it's a car eater, if anything. And we were going to write or communicate with the Ministry of Transportation, they're doing upgrades on Highway 13, and see if they couldn't do anything. Have we ever heard back?
Thank you, worship, we have not. Staff has communicated with the ministry, because as council is aware, that is a road that is under jurisdiction of the Ministry of Transportation, and staff have communicated the needs, and we have not heard back yet. But the, the initial reaction was that it would be something that they could, they could address fairly quickly.
So maybe we could start by emphasizing that. That could be done, and just gravel put in for the time being, and consideration given to, as Mr. Connolly alluded to, sort of some paving, get the ministry to pave as far back as their jurisdiction goes, and then us back, as is on, done on the west side, and then maybe some patch and repair up until 268th, because after 268th, I think, at this point in time, it's in fairly reasonable shape.
Yeah, it's fine.
And when in due course, the development happens there, that starts at 266th, where the detention point is, then they can do some substantial upgrades with curbing and so on and so forth, too. So that would be helpful.
Yeah, we're not, we're not, that's fine. We just want that part of the road fixed for now, just so it's like 24 West. Just smooth it out, fix it. It's fairly grooved, it's very grooved and breaking up, and it is, as, well, as Councillor Fox knows, probably the preferred entrance into that area, exit and entrance, morning, afternoon, evening, to whether you go to Fraser Highway up 264th to Highway 1, or if you go south to 16th and then out to the 99 and so on. It does get a lot of traffic.
Thank you. Thank you. Councillor Qualley has a question.
Thanks, thanks for being here. I wish, I wish we had a massive paving budget, and we try every year to add to that budget. And unfortunately, these problems are common around the municipality with a lot of the rural roads that we have, and unfortunately, with the hard weather rural roads that we have, and unfortunately, with the hard weather we had last year, and anticipated another rough winter, I think that we're going to see more of this. So, I appreciate you being here to delegate personally and with the pictures, but I am going to ask you a favor. When we open our budget deliberations, and the budget will be online, and you'll have an opportunity to provide your feedback to the municipality, I would really, really suggest you ask your neighbors and, and friends in the municipality to comment on the budget about how important it is to add to our paving budget. Not all of council supports the budget line item when it comes to paving, and I think it's a crucial one here for road maintenance. So, I'd encourage you to take advantage of that opportunity when it presents itself, and make your comments on the budget simulator to talk about how important that paving budget is.
Oh, certainly, absolutely, but it is, it is a priority item, we feel, and if I do get notified possibly, because I, as a delegate, I'm hoping that you have my email address, which I know you do, I would, I would gladly rally the support of the community, but I think that at this point, you should also consider making it a priority. I'm sure the, the engineering department has already surveyed the road, I would assume, and the potholes that have been filled with the potholes, with the potholes, it's to the point where it is, well, dangerous.
Yes, for sure.
And it's, I don't know how clear to make it, so...
Thanks for being here.
Thank you. Counselor Richter has a question.
Yeah, a couple of questions. It was, did you say 100 feet or 100 yards?
Feet.
Feet.
Yeah, you know, we're not...
It's not that long.
I estimate 75 to 100 feet.
Yeah?
Yeah. That would take care of the first part, which is the part that's dangerous for the most part, and then the rest, you could just patch, as I said, understanding that money is an issue, obviously. And if you did that, that would be more than fine for now, until proposed development ideas down the road kick in, and then, of course, future funding comes from that for the city or the township, right, so...
And you say that it's been like this for 13 years. Have you or any of your neighbors been putting in complaints about it over the...
Oh, yeah, yeah. And we're always calling in or emailing in about filling the puddles. And again, I say, the Township Road crews have been excellent, but they pop, they're at the point now where they're popping all the time. And we've, we just had a little bit of snow, and they're already popping. Can you imagine if we have another winter? Like, it's, I encourage you, if you haven't, drive the road.
And one last question.
Carefully.
Yeah. I must ask my daughter about it, because I think she uses it all the time. The, the last question, has, have you or any of your neighbors suffered damage to your vehicles from this?
Well, there has been discussion of tire damage, but I don't know exactly what the pathway to that is, and if you even go after the township, and frankly, we don't want to, it's, we just want it fixed. It would resolve all those past, present, possibly future issues, right, to, to do that, so... And as Counselor Fox mentioned, it is a sharp right-hand turn off 20, off 264th, coming north to turn onto it. There have been some vehicles that have gone in the ditch, been towed out, obviously, but it is a fairly deep ditch, so if we could just remediate that part, I think that would go a long way. We're not asking for anything else, really.
Thank you very much.
Quite welcome.
Thank you. That's all the questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay. The next delegation is Mr. Neil Fletcher, while, the B.C. Wildlife Federation. Welcome here.
Thank you very much for having me today. I really appreciate the opportunity, Mayor Froze and, and councillors. My, my presentation tonight is about wetlands, and I know you have a lot of things that you're balancing, a lot of different interests, and interest for me personally is, is wetlands. Personally, I, I grew up in a, a area that was a suburb, and it looks like a lot of communities in Langley, and having access to nature was something for me that really helped my own mental health. And now with two daughters, I do hope that I can provide them with nature, and access to nature, so then I can give them the same opportunities. With the B.C. Wildlife Federation, I am the man, the wetlands manager. We represent over 50,000 members across British Columbia, and about 110 clubs. The closest one here is the Nickel Mackel Enhancement Society. So, with the wetlands education program, our goal is to enhance stewardship capacity of citizens to conserve and protect wetlands. And unfortunately, wetlands have been maligned in our, in our, in our culture, in our society, as these, these places that need to be controlled and tamed, but, but really, they do provide important benefits. In the Lower Mainland, this is a historic image of where wetlands used to be, within the Lower Mainland, the light blue is, is what has been lost. You can see that large swaths of wetlands have been lost, about 70 to 80 percent, where we, we like to live. And for those that are remaining, those wetlands that are remaining, they've been either mismanaged by poor practices, or invasive species have moved into them, so a lot of them are in poor This is, on, on the, despite the fact that they provide all these services for us, for our own organization, we're very supportive of how they provide really good habitat for wildlife, food, water, spawning grounds, hiding places, nesting grounds, stopovers, and all sorts of values. But for society, we've also recognized and come to recognize that they hold water on the landscape and help, can help control flooding, and also replenish streams in the summertime, when there's droughts. Communities are even building wetlands, so they're building wetlands to clean water. This is out of Yarrow Eco Village. And what we've, we're starting to recognize is there are great places to take children and families to connect with nature. So, those are just a few examples of why wetlands are of, of value to society. And I, I make that point because we've often thought of them as wastelands and things that are easily developable. And some cities and, and communities within B.C. are starting to look at, at wetlands and other natural assets as green infrastructure, and things that they actually keep on account to, to ensure that they're investing in them properly, and, and seeing them as a service and a commodity to the environment, to their communities. Our own personal support and involvement in, in the Township of Langley has involved a number of workshops that we've held. We've worked with citizen groups and the public to train them on the values of wetlands. This was in Campbell River Regional Park. We've also had the privilege to work with Langley Environmental Partners Society on some of the great work, work that they're doing. They're working with private landowners to provide support on various projects on their private land, and, and giving them tools that they can use to steward wetlands on those, on those properties. We've also partnered with the Langley Environmental Partners Society, as well as the Township of Langley, on restoring wetlands. So, this is one at the Old Yale Park, out of Murrayville. So, I come to you today to, to say that I want to encourage you to continue to protect and conserve wetlands where you can in the decisions that you make. You have a very important role, as you, as you well know, on influencing land use decisions, and there's a lot on the table that you're having to balance. Wetlands are not wastelands, they're very important, and I hope that you can consider them in future decisions that you make. Something that I wanted to point out was that the Water Sustainability Act of 2016 has, has asserted that wetlands are areas that require permits to protect, and that, and that's something that has not always been known from the new municipals, from municipalities' level, but that they do have to often align with provincial standards. So, advice that we've received from the Green Bylaws Toolkit, Deborah Gibson, who's the author of that, as far as, as far as how do you make your communities greener and more sustainable? One is to cluster development, two is to increase water retention and sustained flows, and three is to protect natural areas forever. And these are three principles that she, she advocates for, and these are, these are green bylaws that are provided to staff to, to use as tools. So, in any case, I want to thank you for your time, and we're here to support you in anything you need related to wetlands, and I'm happy to, to work with you or your staff to support that. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much for that, and thanks for that offer. I do appreciate the work that you do. I do have a question from Counselor Arnison. Counselor Arnison?
Hi, thank you very much. I really appreciate your coming. I, I think it's one of those things that sometimes, I know overall, we're very strenuously trying to protect our environment, and wetlands, as you pointed out, actually, some of the questions that I had, you've already addressed in your PowerPoint presentation, but it seems that sort of our natural inclination as human beings is to try and take wetlands and look at them as something that we could turn to a different purpose, and now we're starting to realize that in terms of flood control and climate mitigation, that they're very key components and part of our green infrastructure that we need to maintain. Further to these green bylaws that you were referencing, I'm wondering, are you aware that there's any kind of activities local governments could do to incentivize protection of, of wetlands in particular?
As far as incentivize for, for planners or for developers?
Developers, sorry, yeah.
Yeah. I think, I think land, like, the, the, what local government has is, is they have decision-making authority, and, and there are often, there's a period of negotiation that can happen with, with council and developers on, on how you can maybe push for greater buffers around a wetland, or something like that, on, on, on giving something back to, to that developer. It's challenging, and other communities around North America, it's law that you have to protect them or offset them if you do damage them. And I don't, you know, in B.C., there's permits, you need a permit to do any work within the province. I wish there was, there was more you could do as far as incentivizing, and, you know, supporting those, those developers that are doing good practices is something as well.
I am aware of tree protection, for example, that you can make a conservation or ecological covenant. I just wondered if that could be expanded perhaps to a wetland that might be existing on somebody's property.
Yeah, I mean, there's, there's covenants that can be put on to those, those lands as well, and wetlands would be included in something like that.
Yeah, and just, you know, final thought, we're starting to wrap our minds now around monetizing certain things as part of our natural resources, that we never gave a monetary value to before, and we're recognizing that rather than, I guess, green infrastructure is better than a lot of the other kind of engineering processes, and it actually has quite a value that we can attach to it, and that should be also part of our decision-making in terms of land use planning. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Richter?
Yes, thank you. Very interesting presentation. So, you were saying you've done some work with LEPs here in the township. Have you done any work down in the Brookswood-Fernrich area with them, in terms of mapping or restoration or anything?
You'll have to remind me of the Fernrich area.
Okay, it's south of 40th Avenue, and sort of more east to about 2, 2 O'Wait?
Personally, no.
No?
Yeah.
Okay. Do you, do you guys do, like, mapping of wetlands?
Yeah, with the District of Squamish, we've actually helped them raise funding to do additional wetlands mapping with, for their water courses.
Okay.
So, that's something that we have done in the past, in partnership with local government.
Okay. So, that's good to know, because we've just approved a new OCP that's going to basically pave over a lot of that land down there, and it would be nice to know if there's areas of wetlands that we should be looking to protect now. How long does it take to, to do a mapping project?
It, it can range, depends on the, the scale and the scope and the budget. I mean, anywhere from, it, it depends. A year to, you know, it, it can be a couple of weeks of a consultant's time, depends on the size and the scale.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks for your presentation. Thank you.
Thanks very much.
Okay, so the next item is bylaws for first and second reading, and we have F1, which is rezoning application number 100476, bylaw 5313, Wagon Hills Farm Society, moved by Counselor Qualley, seconded by Counselor Fox. Discussion on F1. Counselor Richter?
Yes, I just had a question. I know with their existing configuration of 50 beds, that they do have an active farm there, and the people that they're helping to rehabilitate play an active role on that farm. Is the intent that by increasing to 119 beds, that they will still have more of a focus on rehabilitating people through farming, as opposed to maybe moving more into an institutional setting?
I've visited that facility several times, and their farm is an integral part of the operations, the blueberries, the nursery, they have some livestock, and that's one of the ways that they fund their operations, so I expect that's going to continue, and they'll even have more hands on deck to help out. Mr. Seffy, do you have anything to add to that?
That's correct, your worship. Our, our understanding is that the operation of the facility is not going to change in terms of the farm use.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Counselor Arnison?
Yes, thank you, your worship, and through you to staff, probably, Mr. Seffy. I'm wondering, this indicates that it's going to more than double the actual people that will be on the site. I'm just wondering if we have any plans for the footprint of the new accommodations? I understand that they're going to be farming, I just wondered what kind of square footage we might be talking about, and just, I'm very supportive of the idea. I think it's great to have people that are in rehabilitation programs, and that they're actually using this for an agricultural purpose, but I just did wonder about that.
Your worship, if there are any new buildings that are required to facilitate, which, which staff doesn't believe to be the case, they would have to go through the building permit process, subject to the, the usual building code requirements.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Whitmarsh?
Yeah, this is a, you know, a tremendous facility, and the work they do is tremendous for our community, and this expansion up to 119 beds, I think, is fantastic. The possibility to do that, this is previously approved by the ALCs, and just this, they've already extended that deadline, so I think it's good that we move forward on this.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll call a question on F1. And it carries unanimously. And move on to bylaws for first, second, and third reading. G1 is bylaw notice enforcement, bylaw amendment, bylaw number 5323. Could I have a motion, please? Counselor Fox, seconded by Counselor Long, was it?
Yeah.
Okay, so Counselor Long. Discussion on G1. Seeing none, I'm going to call a question. Carries unanimously. And G2 is Drainage Development Works Amendment or Agreement by Law, Qualico Developments, bylaw number 5296. Could I have a motion, please? Counselor Fox, seconded, or is Counselor Qualley? Discussion on G2. Seeing none, oh, Counselor Arnison. There you go. Counselor Arnison.
Yeah, not so fast. Sorry.
You gotta be quick.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, your worship. I had a question through you, your worship, to staff, and it just piqued my interest. The staff report says that approximately 51% of property owners in the area are in support, so I'm just wondering if somebody could please clarify what, what that means?
Mr. Seffy, is there a more exact percentage available?
Your worship, pursuant to the provincial requirements or legislation, there is a need for the majority of the owners to be in support of the, the application to the bylaw, so that's what, that's what that reference is in relation with.
Oh, okay. Well, to me, and this is just my opinion, I think that it would be better if I knew if it was 75% or 55%, you know, maybe for our future consideration, if we had more of an exact number, because it is a staff report. And my final question, I may know the answer, but just to make sure, so ultimately, when this detention pond is built, it is the township's responsibility to manage and maintain it over its lifetime, is that correct, through you, your worship, to Mr. Seffy?
Seffy's indicating yes.
Yes. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll call a question for G2. Seeing none, I'll call a question for G2. Carries unanimously. Move on to G3, it's Highway Closing and Dedication Removal, Lentera, Bylaw 5322. Could I have a motion, please? Councillor Whitmarsh and a seconder, Councillor Qualley. Discussion on G3. Councillor Richter?
Yeah, we had a while back during the public hearing on this one, some concerns from existing residents on Ben's Crescent with regards to ability to enjoy their backyards during the summer months if properties were built up too close to their property lines. So, while I can support the removal of 219A Street, I can't support the removal of 220 Street because I think it is gonna create an unfairness to the people that live on Ben's Crescent.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion or questions? Seeing none, I'll call a question on G3. Motion carries with Councillor Richter and Councillor Arnison opposed. And we move on to, there are no bylaws for consideration at third reading, and there are bylaws for final adoption. I1 is Public Safety Radio Building Amplification System, Bylaw 5319. Could I have a motion, please? Councillor Davis. And seconded by Councillor Qualley. Any discussion on I1? Seeing none. Call a question. Carries unanimously. And we want to I2, and that's 64 Avenue and 224 Street Water, Local Area Service Construction, Bylaw Amendment, Bylaw 5315. Could I have a motion, please? Councillor Long and seconded by Councillor Davis. Councillor Richter has a question?
Yeah, I just had a question through you to staff. This is a substantial price increase over what was probably presented to the residents when they took the vote on whether or not they wanted an LAS, a local area service. So, I'm just wondering, have staff recontacted the people who voted in favor of this to tell them about the price increase?
I believe it's been repetitioned. Mr. Seffy?
That's correct, Your Worship. The revised price is the one that the neighbors voted on.
Okay, then, thank you very much.
Thank you. And I'll call a question now on I2. It carries with Councillor Arnison opposed. Move on to I3, and that's the Brookswood Furniture Tree Protection Bylaw, Bylaw Number 5301. Could I have a motion, please? Councillor Sparrow, seconder. Councillor Long. Any discussion on I3? Councillor Arnison?
Thank you, Your Worship. I had a question through you to staff. I'm not sure if we can come up with a satisfactory synopsis of why this would be a case. Paragraph eight in the staff report of the protection bylaw itself, it excludes the township of Langley from the provisions of the tree-cutting bylaw. And so, aside from things like service corridors, et cetera, I really feel that personally, the township should have to comply with the same standards as the rest of the community. So, if perhaps I could have an ex, well, we could have an explanation of why it is that the township would be exempted.
Mr. Seffy?
Thank you, Your Worship. Councillor Arnison actually referenced a number of more frequent cases, servicing, construction of roads and access to properties. So, that's one example. Restoration and rehabilitation of areas that may need rehabilitation is another case. And construction of really public utilities such as detention facilities, pump stations, things of that nature are really the cases that historically, we have not had municipal requirements be applicable to.
Okay, well, thank you for that clarification. It's just that because we do own properties in that area and they would be substantially treed, we're not making exceptions for those particular services that we need to, you know, to be able to control our tree management. So, I just, I'm not quite satisfied that that would be something that I think should stand, but it's part of our bylaw. I had a further question regarding the penalties at paragraph 28. I know that there is some discussion about the statutory limit, but they just don't seem substantial enough. And based on community concern, I'm wondering if they couldn't be made a little more hefty just so that tree removal is not a cost of doing business? That's sort of a question through you, Your Worship, to Mr. Seffy.
Mr. Seffy, is it possible to increase, I believe that's the question, to increase the amounts that are in the bylaw?
They are set at the maximum allowable, Your Worship.
Thank you.
Okay, all right. I did have another one that's, I guess it's related to this, although it's not part of the bylaw. I'm wondering if the township intends, through you, Your Worship, to Mr. Seffy, are we going to maintain a hotline for people to be able to report tree removal like we had when we had the tree clearcutting protocols?
Your Worship, we have our regular bylaw department contact information that is available to the public. I don't think we will. We have plans to create an additional hotline, per se, but rather the department, the bylaw enforcement department.
I'll volunteer for the hotline myself if you want. When they give me a phone line. Sorry, and one final thought. Further to that, is through you, Your Worship, to staff, are we anticipating any increase in bylaw enforcement to ensure that we have adequate staffing if it's necessary to, you know, review these calls in case there's excessive tree removal now that the OCP has been passed?
Your Worship, staff is always, I guess, will say no to additional staff resources because we could always use additional resources to assist with the workload. Having said that, we will have to just monitor the situation and see how the existing complement of staff is able to keep up with the additional work. And if need be, we'll make the request to council as part of the budget process.
Okay, thank you.
You, Councillor Richter?
Yeah, I just want to say I'm gonna support this bylaw. It's a start. We don't have any now, other than the interim one down there. And it's my hope that this bylaw can be expanded to include all the areas of the township going forward, as well as to make sure that we give due and fair consideration to protecting as many of the beautiful big street trees that we have in Brookswood right now, rather than letting them fall victim for cars. So, I will support this bylaw as a starting point.
Thank you. And just arising from some of the comments, I just want to clarify with Mr. Seffy that this bylaw really came from the interim tree-cutting bylaw. And it's basically, it was the intent when that came in, that upon adoption of the Bylaw 5300, the OCP update, that a tree bylaw would come in. So, we have been enforcing all the way along. So, I would think that that would continue. And that the public in that area certainly, the residents and the property owners are certainly aware of the interim tree-cutting bylaw. It's had lots of time to be there. And now this one is just making it official under the bylaw. Is that correct, Mrs. Seffy?
That's correct, Your Worship, yeah.
Okay, thank you. And certainly I'll be supporting this and I would hope that we have a unanimous support on this this time. And I'll call a question. And it carries unanimously. Okay, so now we go to the mayor's report, mayor and councillor report. And first of all, good evening, everyone. Thank you very much for coming out. And it's been a bit of a chilly weekend. Hope everyone stayed warm, but it was a nice sunny Sunday. There's a lot of good weather. Good winter information online at tol.ca, including the snow and ice control program. And that's something we don't want to think about, but it's part of the season. And certainly, there's a brochure that we have and information online with great information about our roads and staying safe. So, I'd encourage everyone to take a look at that. On Wednesday, October 25th, I attended the morning meeting of the Phoenix Group in Vancouver, where I provided information on all the great things that are happening in the township. It was a good crowd and many of those attending do work in Langley on several projects. On Thursday, October 26th, was the annual Greater Langley Chamber of Commerce Business Excellence Awards. And the winners this year, and I'm gonna read them out because I'm, we're all very proud of our companies and individuals in the township. Business Person of the Year was Dana Matheson from CND Logistics. Community Impact for Profit was the Artic Co-op. Community Impact for Nonprofit Business was Langley Community Farmers Market Society. Entrepreneur of the Year was Spencer Turley of Murrayville Plumbing and Heating. Environmental Leadership Award went to Joanne Saunders from Quantlin Polytechnic University. See, one of your own. Large Business of the Year is Raymond McNeil at Cascades Casino, Langley. Medium Business of the Year is Caitlin Paul from Edmunds Batteries Limited. Service Excellence in Food and Beverage category was Lance Verhoff from the Trading Post Brewery. And Service Excellence Retail Service is Dana Matheson, CND Logistics. Small Business of the Year is Dr. Rene Ferguson, Mountain View Veterinary Hospital. Big cheer over here. U40 Business Person of the Year was Darian Kovak from Jelly Marketing. So, congratulations to all the winners and all the nominees. There's a lot of nominees this year and every one of them deserves our appreciation and Public information was held on Monday, October 30th, at the Langley Event Centre regarding the proposal to provide supportive housing at the quality end property. This was a facilitated dialogue with BC Housing, Steppingstone, and Fraser Health with respect to the proposal, which would include an office for the new integrated care management team funded through Fraser Health to provide access to treatment for people who are homeless. On Wednesday, November 1, Councillor Long, Councillor Qualley, and myself attended Metro Vancouver's Zero Waste Conference titled "The Future Without Waste," where topics included food waste and, food waste and textile waste and a variety of topics. And did you know that globally, almost one-third of the food that we produce is wasted? Local food waste solutions are on the rise, but new national and international approaches suggest greater levels of collaboration are needed across sectors, interests, and even political boundaries. A transformational shift in everything from technology to governance using levers in policy and capital investment is the only way to successfully reduce food waste. This session brought to mind our local company, Entera, which turns food waste into renewable food for animals and plants. So, there's a lot of work being done right here in Langley. On Thursday, November 2nd, was the annual Fraser Valley Commercial Building Awards, where Township of Langley Development Lotus Living at 2086076 Avenue won an award of merit. Congratulations to Speedway Homes and DF Architecture Incorporated. On Friday, November 30th, was the annual Langley 4H banquet and awards held at the Fort Langley Evangelical Free Church. Congratulations to all the 4H members and it's always a great thing to attend. And after I was there for, to give greetings to the township, I went off to the Langley Vent Centre, where local elected officials participated in the puck drop for the Vancouver Giants game at the Langley Vent Centre. Our Member of Parliament, John Aldag, and Member of Parliament, Mark Warwa, MLA Rich Coleman, MLA Mary Pollock, and myself participated in the Pre-Remembrance Day ceremony, recognizing our fallen men and women and those who served in the military. And that evening, they had a special commemoration for Vimy Ridge, the anniversary of Vimy Ridge. On Saturday, November 4th, was the 10th Annual LAPS Gala. And this year's theme was "A Tale as Old as Time: An Enchanted Ball." Over $132,000 was raised this year and, from what I understand, exceeded all expectations. And beginning this week, November 6th, the Mobility Pricing Independent Commission will be hosting six workshops across the region to gather feedback from key stakeholders. At the same time as the stakeholder workshops, an online questionnaire will be launched to allow the public to provide feedback specifically pertaining to their part of the region. The questionnaire will be posted on the website and I don't know if we have it up there, but it's www.it'stimemv.ca. It's time mv. And certainly important considerations that the Mobility Pricing Commission will be looking at and looking forward to input from everyone throughout the region. On Sunday, November 19th, we'll be hosting Douglas Day. And on Saturday, November 11th, Remembrance Day ceremonies and services will be held in Fort Langley, in Alder Grove, at the Legion, and Murrayville Cemetery, and in Langley City. And at this time, I do want to mention, I don't know if everybody's heard, but today in Abbisford, a member of the Abbisford Police Department was shot in line of duty and died as a result of his wounds. And another police officer is wounded and by gunshot wound and is in hospital. And it brings home how important it is our first responders and sacrifice that they make every day. And it's our first responders and those who fought in the many wars. I think it's very tragic, means a lot to me. I was a police officer and it hits, it hits very close. And I would just ask that we just provide a moment of silence in remembrance of those that have fallen in our wars and also for the families and the officers that were struck in Abbisford. And our hearts go out to their families, to all those first responders who were there today and it extends to fire, the paramedics, the police, the call-takers and dispatchers at ECOM. All are very affected by this and especially the families. Our hearts go out to the families. So, this time, I'd just like to ask those who can rise and we'll just provide a moment of silence. Is there anything to add from council? Okay, I don't see anything, so thank you very much. We'll move on to the rest of the agenda. Just give me a minute to get back to it. Okay, so we now move on to items from prior meetings. And there was a notice, a motion that was deferred at the regular evening council meeting on June 26th. So, Mr. Back, and do we need a mover and seconder again, or is it just back on the table?
It's back on the table, Your Worship.
Okay, so I'll now open up the discussion for M1, its policy guidelines to protect more tree canopy in the new Brookswood Furniture OCP. Councillor Arnison?
Yes, thank you, Your Worship. I think it's rather timely now and the whole discussion was held in abatement until such time as we had reviewed and adopted the tree protection bylaw. So, I just want to make a couple of comments about this. Effectively, this is from a green toolkit and it's looking at trying to protect more of our green canopy. I just want to point out to council that these are discretionary tools that can be used. And I think that they are most effective to be complementary to the protection that we now have under the tree policy. So, one of the issues I know is problematic is, and we've had a lot of discussion about tree canopies on private property. And therefore, this offers a facilitated and negotiated approach in order to monetize their value. That way, when you use some of these either individually or combination with each other, for example, we could, I'll just use one, for example, establish defined percentages of canopy to be protected. And then, in return, you get credits maybe for tree saved, setbacks, and side yard adjustments. So, those are the kind of things in our planner's arsenal that could be used. And I think for me, what it does also is to heighten the efficacy of the current plan that we have because we adopted an OCP that has opportunities to review ecological areas. And once they're identified, I think it's helpful to have more rather than less opportunities to be able to utilize these in order to enhance the tree protection there. So, that's why I put this forward.
You, Councillor Richter?
Yeah, I'm going to support this. A large part of what makes Brookswood, Brookswood are the size of the trees down there. And I think very much the canopy provided by those trees is an important piece of the DNA that makes Brookswood so special. I think Councillor Arnison's motion here will go a long way towards helping us protect as much of that canopy as we can, particularly since we know that 48% of all the coniferous trees in Langley Township are located in Brookswood. So, I'm very happy to support this and I thank Councillor Arnison for bringing it forward.
Thank you. Councillor Fox?
Yeah, I'm having difficulty with parts of this. And I'll be specific to number two. Reduce lot sizes with bonus density provisions for tree preservation under appropriate circumstances. We just went through three public hearings and bonus density was a word that was not, in my opinion, seen favorably by anybody in the Brookswood area. In fact, I heard a number of people say bonus density cannot be allowed under any circumstances. In fact, I heard a number of people say bonus density cannot be allowed under any circumstances. The issue of bonus density comes with smaller lot sizes, more density within a specific area. I think we dealt with that pretty well in our OCP. We had 4,000 square foot lots, we had to raise those to 5,000 square foot lots. We had wording which was somewhat loose with respect to how many cluster housing opportunities would be allowed in a specific area, and actually it was Counsel Whitmarsh that said that that should be limited to 10% of the geographic area within a neighborhood plan. So we've dealt with this issue, and so I see some redundancy here. Having said that, I would like two things to happen. Number one would be for staff to look at and maybe do an analysis in the context of what our 5301, which we just passed unanimously, what our OCP has covered and what our 5301 has covered, and how the crossover. And the second thing I would like, prior to any vote on this, would be the possibility to engage staff in a discussion, maybe at a CPC or such, where we actually talk about what this would look like and how it could be applied in the context of the OCP. I can't see where number two, for example, can be applied, given the restrictive nature of the language in the bylaw 5300. I heard very clearly, "Do not provide bonus density. Do not do what they did in Willoughby and provide bonus density." If I heard it once, I heard it 10 times. If I heard it 10 times, I heard it 20. So I just can't support this the way it is. I'm willing to look at a potential referral, but not, I won't support it the way the language is right now.
Thank you. Counsel Long.
Your Worship, there is a spirit in this motion that I think many of us would likely support. There's some obvious problematic wording in there, because it talks about a draft OCP, which of course now we have a fully effective OCP, we hope at least. So maybe we should just refer this to staff rather than pick it all apart, and because there's some general wording in there, including, you know, considerations that may include. So there's some openness, and I'm sure staff are well aware of the challenges that we're facing, and I think the spirit of this motion. So perhaps we should refer it to staff and have them come back with a suggestion of either some revised wording or a session at CPC, or whatever would work to take the positive aspects of this motion and roll it into the OCP.
Do you wish to make that referral?
Yep.
Seconder? Oh, Counsel Davis, sorry, didn't see your hand. Okay, so on the referral to staff, discussion on referrals. Counsel Davis?
Okay, that's just a referral?
Yeah, to refer this to staff.
To staff, not a CPC.
Was that in your motion?
No, I think to staff, and then they can...
They can come back, and then... And then we can then, once we see a report from staff, then we could decide if we want to take it further.
Okay, thanks.
Thanks. Counsel Richter.
Well, there's six items here, all of which I think have value, except as Counselor Fox has pointed out, maybe number two is redundant, but I'm not sure why we would want to throw the baby out with the bathwater here. If he doesn't like number two, strike number two, and let's get on with one, three, four, five, and six. So I don't think we should refer it to staff. I think we can deal with it here. And it's really important to define the percentages of canopy that we want to protect, as well as whether we should use community amenity charges to secure high-value forested stands, or where are the major significant tree stands in the entire area. I think we need to move on this now before we start getting a lot of development applications coming forward.
Thank you. Counsel Arneson.
Yes, thank you, Worship. So further to some of the questions and comments, I would say that the only reason why, I have no problem with changing some of the wording of the basic body of the notice of motion, because in fact, it was written prior to the OCP. So when it talks about a draft, it was a draft, but you know, we can change that, I don't mind that. But further to number two, as I said, these are discretionary items that could or could not be used. I totally understand that staff would be looking at this and saying, under the circumstances of the OCP that was adopted, perhaps this is something, the bonus density, for example, that wouldn't be appropriate in some situations, but could actually be appropriate where it was congruent with the OCP. And that's why it says "under appropriate circumstances." I mean, if we want to get rid of it, that's fine. My only concern about any delay is, as Counsel Richter pointed out, we continue to get applications in the area, and I, more than anything, would like to have an opportunity for our planners to be able to utilize some of these, and you know, to be able to negotiate a better outcome for some of the significant trees in the area.
Thank you. Counsel Whitmarsh.
I feel that we've done significant work on the currently passed OCP with regards to trees and lot sizes. We've dealt with some of these issues that are listed here already in the new OCP. We just passed tonight a tree protection bylaw. It's the only area of the Township of Langley that has a tree protection bylaw and prevents the clear cutting of trees in the undeveloped area of Brookswood. So it's far more strict there than anywhere else in the community. And so for me, I would be open to hearing from staff and to have input from staff if that's the will of council. If we're going to be voting on these things tonight, I would certainly be voting against them. I find them to be very onerous, but I would be interested in hearing from staff just how onerous they actually might be.
Thank you. Counsel Qualley.
Yeah, I mean, just to echo what Counsel Whitmarsh said, there's a lot of potential challenges inside of these specific points, all six of them. I don't, I'd like to understand what that costs, what we would need for enforcement, all of the other pieces. So I don't have the information I need to vote on this, so perhaps this is something that we could look at at a CPC, but we have a tree bylaw that's like seven minutes old, so maybe we could spend some time figuring out how that's going to work first, and then get some information from staff about all of this. I think it was very clear in the OCP that was passed that tree protection is important to all of us, and we all address that as part of the, as the, part of the OCP. So yeah, I'm not going to support this tonight, because I don't think we have the information we need to do this right now.
Thank you. Counsel Fox, deferral, referral?
Well, I just want to, for clarity, have a comment that seems to come up in a lot of the correspondence and was made at the table here. There seems to be some degree of urgency associated with passing this, because there will be an influx, a massive influx of development proposals, which in reality, if I remember correctly from two weeks ago, can't be the case. We can't accept any more up until October 3rd, any received up until October 23rd. We can receive no more, no future applications until the neighborhood plans are in place. Is that correct, Your Worship, through you, to Mr. Backen?
Mr. Backen.
Your Worship, we understood they would be accepted, but that they would be processed concurrently with the neighborhood planning process? So they would be subject to the planning process as it went forward?
Okay, so that we're not going to get them across our table, anything up until October 23rd, which I think is only one more application, if I'm not mistaken, through you to Mr. Seffey, or is it one, or?
Not very many.
Your Worship, there are a number of applications, as I recall, five or six, that are in the process. In other words, they were submitted prior to October 23rd deadline established by council, which have not made it to council yet. So those applications will be subject to council's ruling of being processed pursuant to the 87 plan.
Okay, so, but any future applications that come in will come in a congruent nature with the development of the neighborhood planning process. Is that correct? So we do have some time?
That's correct.
Okay, so I'll support the referral for information, and I would add, if I could, to the referral that we have a CPC discussion with staff associated with this issue.
So do we want to wait for the report from staff and then decide to go to CPC? We could do that at that time. Maybe we just get the report, and then once that comes, if we feel there's...
Okay, that's right.
Reason for discussion. The staff report may answer all the questions that we have. Okay, CNO for the discussion on the referral. I'm going to call a question. Carrie's with Counsel Richter and Arneson opposed. Okay, so now we move on to M2. I'm just going to clear the queue, do all the stuff I need to do. Counsel Richter, is a motion to reconsider? New business after, so M2, motion to reconsider, and Counsel Richter?
Yes, I'm moving reconsideration of bylaw 5300 on the grounds that 50% of the people were not happy with our decision last meeting, and that the issue of phasing is a big one that I think if we took some time to discuss and resolve, we could probably help bring more people to support bylaw 5300.
Is there a seconder? Counsel Arneson seconds. Discussion on the motion to reconsider. Counsel Arneson?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Your Worship. I supported this for the purpose just of some discussion, because I think that we are starting to gain an awareness. I know council just voted on this, and nobody really has the appetite for opening up this discussion again, except the fact that I think phasing is an important issue, and I really do want to consider the community's concern. It may not be enough to overturn this, but I really do think that we have to direct ourselves towards the fact that the primary concern arising from the adoption, the community was somewhat split about which plan they supported, but I don't know anybody that didn't support phasing, basically, anybody who contacted me in any event. And so I think that, I don't know, I don't know that there's a legal way to just, you know, take that component out, rework it, and put it back in, but I thought it was worth some further conversation to see whether or not there could be some type of amendment to our current OCP. Excuse me, I have the floor. Thank you. It's, yes, thank you. And I just thought that it was a worthwhile discussion for us to continue to have as we move forward.
Counsel Sparrow.
Thank you. Well, I agree with the comments about phasing and being a worthwhile discussion. The question, I think, was asked by myself during that, the vote of the OCP, that that is an item that we can deal with on its own and look at that. I think phasing throughout our whole community, I think, is something that we need to address. So reconsidering this is not at all the way to go about that. If that is a concern of council, we need to have that discussion and address the actual issue. But bringing this back to be reconsidered, the whole bylaw itself, is not, is not the way to do it. I think it's making it seem as if we can just keep voting on this as many times as we can to just keep getting different results. So we need to deal with the issues as they are. The Brookswood OCP has been voted on. Phasing is certainly an issue that we need to deal with and talk about and address head-on. That's a separate issue that we can deal with as a council, not through this process.
Thank you. Counsel Whitmarsh.
Yeah, we discussed in the process in the last meeting, we discussed the idea of phasing. We talked about phasing, there'll be a lot of natural phasing just through servicing and servicing availability. We decided as a council to move forward with three neighborhood plans being developed and move forward in that process. That was a decision of this council. It was a strong mandate given to staff to move in that direction by this council, and I don't think we should be reconsidering that, that strong statement today.
Thank you. Counsel Richter.
Yeah, well, the problem with dealing with phasing in another way other than reconsidering would be we'd have to have an amendment to the bylaw, which would necessitate a whole another public hearing, and people have mentioned here that they don't think that there's an appetite to keep on fighting this. We just need to tweak it to get it to be as good as we can get it to be. So that's why I think bringing it back for reconsideration, specifically to address phasing, is the way to go about it.
Thank you. Counsel Long.
Yeah, so are we voting on reconsidering?
Reconsideration, just voting on reconsideration.
And then it comes on the table.
Then it comes on the table.
So we're going to have several times.
Yeah, we have to vote on, so.
Okay, I guess I want to have...
Speaking to or against the process of reconsideration.
Well, yeah, I mean, I think there's some confusion around phasing. I mean, you know, there's some natural phasing that's going to happen in terms of being close to services and so forth, and I think in some of these other things that we've discussed over the years, it talks about natural areas that are adjacent to developed areas already, which are obviously going to be given higher consideration and so forth. So it's, it's not, I don't think it's a matter of phasing or not phasing. And I don't know if there was phasing, and I don't believe there was an actual phasing in the 87 plan either. It was the same thing, identifying areas on a map, natural topography, accessibility to services and so forth, that made the difference. So anyway, I think we need to move forward, not move backwards on this one.
Thank you. Any further discussion on reconsideration? So I'll call a question on M2. Everyone's voted. And it fails with Counsel Fox, Counsel Arneson, Counsel Whitmarsh, Mayor Fowles, Counsel Qualley, Counsel Sparrow, Counsel Davis, Counsel Long opposed. Move on to other business, and Counsel Richter, I'll put you back on. I'm just going to clear the queue, get everything organized here. Counsel Richter, you have a notice of motion, or a motion, sorry.
I'll just read the "Therefore, be it resolved..." "Therefore, be it resolved that council adopt a policy that sitting members of council not bid on township work nor use their businesses to bid on township work for the duration of their tenure on council. And be it further resolved that council asks staff to revise all appropriate policies to include this provision, and to ensure that sitting members of council are not asked or encouraged to bid on township work. And be it finally resolved that council also adopt a policy that township resources not be used to benefit the businesses of sitting members of council throughout their time on council." I so move.
There is a seconder. Counsel Davis seconds it. Counsel Long, you should speak to it.
No, I have other, I have other business.
Okay, I'll clear the queue again. Okay, so you're off, so Counsel Qualley.
Well, thanks. I've spent a lot of time on this the last couple of weeks, because this motion has evolved over the several weeks, from one to targeted me openly, to one that targets me overtly. And while I may not be named in this current motion, I still feel like I'm being bullied and threatened by another member of council. There are rules about this conduct embedded right now in the community charter, and I think if we start adding random acts or random nonsensical stipulations to those, to those that are already embedded in the charter, we limit the kind of people that are going to want to take this seat. I look at this job as community service. We are talking about a lunch that was catered by my business for $1,200. That's what this has evolved from, and truthfully, it's exhausting to have to deal with this over and over again. This job will not continue to attract good people to want to sit in these chairs as long as people feel like they can't run their own business and do something outside of their seat in local government. I'm done being bullied over this issue. This is, there are rules around this in the community charter, and I am not going to support this. This has to end today.
Thank you. Counsel Richter.
In many respects, it's disappointing that we have to put something like this in writing, but it is clearly an oversight in our policy manual. I think that we all have to have a common understanding of what is appropriate behavior and what is not appropriate behavior. And it wasn't $1,200. It wasn't a lot of money in the bigger scheme of things. It was $1,453, and that's what it was this time. But what happens if it's like $15,000 next time, or $150,000, or $15 million? Like, what happens when we get a council of people who are only sitting on this council in order to further the ends of their businesses? Is that the right kind of council for a community? Now, in many respects, this was a comedy of errors, and no fingers can be pointed specifically at any one person other than to say, "We didn't have something in writing." And while I've been on council for as long as I have, and I've always understood that this would not be an appropriate thing to do, I never asked that it be put in writing, and I think it needs to be put in... and I think it needs to be put in writing. We swear an oath of office, each and every one of us, that says, "We are not going to take a direct or indirect pecuniary benefit." If our businesses are getting money from township coffers, I think that's a direct pecuniary benefit. And we need just to make sure that we've drawn the line. What happened, happened. It's over. It's done. But let's make sure now that it never happens again, and that's the purpose of this motion.
Thank you. Counselor Whitmarsh?
I think the community charter is very clear on these matters of conflict of interest, Section 107, and I'm certainly not an expert, but it talks quite a bit about council members and municipalities entering into contracts with council members. It's very detailed about what should happen and what should not happen. And, you know, I don't think that we, as a township of Langley, need to develop our own standards that somehow we believe are higher or better than the rest of the province falls under. The community charter is very clear, and it allows people who live in a community to be able to function as a counselor and still operate their businesses. And there may be times in which those businesses and their role as council do, at times, come together. And charter, the charter very clearly lays out what should happen in those cases and when it happens. And certainly, there's, since I've been on council, we haven't seen anything that's violated that community charter. That's very clear from legal opinion, and I don't think we need to then now develop something new that we think is better than the entire province operates under. I'm quite satisfied with the community charter, and I think we should keep it that way so that we can encourage people, good people, to run for council and fall under the guidelines that are already given to us by the community charter.
Thank you. I'd like to add a few things, and there was a few, oh, well, I'm going to speak now. I find it very disappointing that this motion is on the table. I think with all the knowledge we had, we went through this fairly thoroughly with legal opinions and memos from staff on, and I, you know, actually, we all learned a lot when these things come up, and I think there's absolutely no problem with any member of council asking the question about anything that happens, and wants to get the answer. I mean, that's fine. That's what happened in the case that was referred to earlier. The question was asked, and the answer was given, legal opinion was obtained, and now we're looking at making a motion, or making a bylaw, or a policy that supersedes the charter, the charter. And I'm going to read Section 107, Sub 1, just to make sure that council is very clear on what governs council members. And on Section 107, Sub 1, it says, "If a municipality enters into a contract in which (a) a council member, or (b) a person who was a council member at any time during the previous six months," so it reaches past your tenure as council, "has a direct or indirect pecuniary interest, this must be reported as soon as reasonable practicable at a council meeting that is open to the public. And (2) in addition to the obligation under Section 100, a council member or former council member may advise the corporate officer as soon as reasonable practicable of any contracts that may be reported under Section 1, Sub 1, in relation to that person." And Subsections 3, and this is where it's very serious, the consequences. "A person who contravenes Subsection 2 is disqualified from holding office as described in Section 108.1 unless the contravention was done inadvertently or because of an error in judgment made in good faith." So, I believe that the folks that wrote this piece of legislation contemplated this. There are many communities where members of the community do business with the municipality. I can't say for sure if George Preston ever sold a vehicle to the Township of Langley, but if he did, he would have followed Section 107 of the community charter, if that existed or with similar legislation at the time. It's, it's, it's something that happens, but there is clear guidelines to make sure it's transparent, and all of council would be aware of any other member of council that had, is entering into contract. So, doing this on top is really totally unnecessary. I can't support this at all, because it is covered on the community charter, and the community charter is what governs municipalities in the province of British Columbia. So, without, I'll take other, other questions. Counselor Davis?
Thank you. I, boy, I'm nervous about this. I don't want to say anything, but I, I don't think we should be here talking with this, talking about this motion. I think that we, as a council, elected council member, we shouldn't go close to, to, to going, I don't think we should go, going into business with the township with a 10-foot pole. I think there's an optical illusion here that, that council members should just not do this. There's another issue here is, what about the other people that have put bids in to, to do business with the council? All of a sudden, you know, if they're running up against David Davis, they're going to say, "Oh, it's a done deal." Like, you know, there's, it's, it's, it, we, common sense, and I know I'm going to get in heck for this, but common sense says we should stay right away from that. Three or four years ago, in my experience, there was a piece of property that needed to be cut for some parking, and I just, I was a councilor, and I, "Oh, I can go cut it." You know, it was to accommodate parking for a township event on township property. If you can't get anybody, I can do it. And I went home and told my wife, and she said, "Are you crazy? You cannot work for the township. You cannot do that." And I just, I don't think we need to be here talking about this, but on the other hand, we can't, council members should not, and I don't care about this charter, because what's going to happen is, everyone's going to say, "Well, what about the people that are bidding against, against David Davis as a council member? It's a done deal. I should, I just, you shouldn't." I don't know. I just, I have problems with this council policy to be here, and I have problems with why we're here. We shouldn't be here. We shouldn't, we shouldn't have gotten this close to getting a check from the Township of Langley for doing work for them. Just, it just, it's too close to me. That's, I just wanted to say my point. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Qualley?
Well, I would like to provide a little bit of context in this argument. We're talking about lunch that was served at a farm tour. So, there's a couple of businesses in the municipality that has the ability to deliver the service that was contracted by the municipality, which is why they called, they put the bid out and included me in that RFP process. The business I own has a very high standard for sourcing local. We are one of a few businesses in the municipality that can do 100% locally sourced, locally provided food. I'm not talking about Subway sandwiches and Lay's potato chips. This is a totally different process, that there's very few businesses in the community that could even fulfill the RFP requirement for our farm tour. So, the reason that I bid on this process is because I'm really proud of what goes on here in Langley. I'm really proud of our farmers and our, the food producers that we have locally, and I have really good longstanding relationships with those providers. And the reason my bid was lower than everyone else's is because I wanted to do this to show off the community, not for a profit center. But I can tell you that since this lunch, my prices have gone up, because clearly my prices are too low, by a lot, not just by a little bit. But I did this because I saw it as an opportunity to show off what our community does. I'm really proud of our farmers and the food that we raise and produce in this community. So, that's really what this lunch was about. This wasn't about Subway sandwiches and Tim Hortons donuts for 25 people. Also, when we took our oath of office, we also agreed to participate in an environment of work that was respectful and free of harassment. I haven't done that since I've been elected. Three years I've been bullied in this seat. Counselor Sparrow, for three years before that. This is just one piece of what the community is seeing. This has gone on behind the scenes since the day I was, in fact, since before I was elected. So, we did swear an oath in this job, and I appreciate what Counselor Davis is saying about this, and that's a reason this has never occurred before, and will never occur again. And truthfully, my point in all of this is who's going to be attracted to sit in this seat when they see how we're treated, by other members of council and by the public? The whole concept of public discourse has gotten so far off the rails.
Stick to the motion.
This is the motion, Mayor Fros. The whole motion is about the process, and Counselor Richter referred to us taking our oath and how counselors are in violation of the oath. Well, counselors are also in violation of our policy around respectful workplaces. So, if we want to have this conversation, then let's go a little further down the road, but this is, this has to, just has to stop at some point.
Thank you. Counselor Richter?
Well, I guess what I would like to say for starters is, there's lots of tapes of these meetings. We can go back and watch the tapes, and we can see who's harassing who. But leaving that aside for a moment, the mayor referenced the idea that, you know, George Preston probably sold a car or two to the township.
They probably, yes, it could have.
Well, I don't know if he did or he didn't, but the point is, we're now 125,000 people with $150 million a year budget. We're big business. We're one of the biggest employers in the community, and we need to conduct ourselves with the highest degree of professionalism and transparency. Now, reference was made to a legal opinion, and I'm glad we got the legal opinion, because the legal opinion said quite clearly, "It has to be disclosed." So, one of the questions I would ask, I would ask, if there wasn't a legal opinion, would this even have ever been disclosed? And again, I go back to, where do you draw the line? Is it okay to do it for $1,500, but not okay? Like, what happens if somebody runs for council next time who owns a paving company? And the only reason they're doing it is for community pride, and so that they can pave all the township's roads? Like, where do you draw the line? I think you have to draw the line in the sand early. It has to be firm, and it has to be clear. And to me, the line is, if you have put your name forward and been fortunate enough to be elected, then your obligation is to every member of this community, not just to your business. Your business should really be taking second place to your job as a counselor. Now, the legal opinion we did get, quote Section 101 and 107. I personally thought, when I first read this legal opinion, I'm not a lawyer, but I personally thought it was a very narrow description of conflict of interest, because it defined conflict of interest as having to occur in a meeting. Now, if I picked up the phone and I called Mr. Backen and said, "Mark, I'd like you to hire my son," is that a conflict of interest? I think it is, and it didn't occur in a meeting. So, if you're defining, as this lawyer did, and I think lawyers can pretty much provide whatever opinion you'd like them to provide, then you're getting a very narrow interpretation of it. There are two other sections in the community charter, Section 102, which is restrictions on inside influence, and Section 103, which is restrictions on outside influence. Those two sections weren't even addressed. And specifically, 102, subsection 1B, says, "An officer or an employee of the," like, there's a restriction on inside influence by an officer or an employee of the municipality. Counselors are officers of the municipality. "If the member has a direct or indirect pecuniary interest in the matter to which the decision, recommendation, or other action relates." It's right there in black and white, in the same charter that other members of this council are saying, "We're already protected by it." Well, yeah, we are, if we listen to the whole charter and not just certain sections of it. So, this needs to make, again, I go back, we need to make sure this never happens again. If you want to run for council, run for council. Don't run for council because you want to put your business in a favorable position in the community. Run for council because you really want to do good for the community. That's the real reason why you should be sitting at this table. Period.
Thank you. Thank you. Counselor Fox?
Well, my comments are addressed to the students of Qualley. Number one, at council, we don't drink milk. Number two, I'd love to see your summaries of tonight's meeting. Thank you.
That's it?
That's all I wanted to say.
Always the teacher.
Maybe Ms. Klimick can send me a couple.
I eat turkey. All right, we got to get back to business here, so.
We should drink milk, though. No.
That's a conflict. Okay, so, we're back to the motion, and I do stand by it. I think the community charter spells it out very clearly, and certainly, it's a transparent process. It does have to be reported to council, and if there was a bidder who came in and was on council, council is going to see that and make a decision at the time. So, we do have to allow future councils their discretion, and allow people who do want to run for council not to be inhibited because they happen to own a business in the Township of Langley. The charter is very clear. I'm quite satisfied with that, and so I can't support this motion. So, I'm going to call a question on M1. And the motion fails with Counselor Fox, Counselor Whitmarsh, Mayor Fros, Counselor Qualley, Counselor Sparrow, Counselor Long opposed. Is there any other business? Counselor Long had, I just got to get things clear here. Counselor Long?
Still have a public hearing to go, so I'll make this real quick, and it's kind of important, because I ran into a citizen the other day. She doesn't have a cell phone. She's an elderly lady. She walks from Safeway to her home on 264th, from one end, ought to go over to another. There are two telephone booths on each end of town. Both of them don't work, and the wires have been cut and so forth. So, I thought, you know, I'll phone Tellus and find out what's going on, and it took quite a while to get ahold of somebody in the Philippines, but the bottom line is, you know, it's a tough gig for Tellus, but if there's a telephone booth with a sign on it saying there's a telephone in it, it should be working. So, at the suggestion of the gentleman on the phone today, we need to write a letter to Tellus and say, "Hey, if you're going to have phone booths in the Township of Langley, please make sure they're working." Apparently, these ones have been out for several weeks, and it could be dangerous, right? So, without a motion, your worship, maybe you could ask if staff could write such a letter and bring it back to council. Thank you kindly.
Thank you, your worship. I've got a notice of motion here. Whereas the Township of Langley has a respectful workplace policy that was last reviewed on the member of 2014, and whereas I've had many TOL citizens question me about the recent social media interaction regarding the catering in the 2017 farm tour, be it resolved that council requests a legal opinion as to whether the respectful workplace policy has been violated as it pertains to, "This policy applies to Township of Langley elected officials' employees..." dot, dot, dot. And if so, what alternative forms of recourse are available to those who violated the policy?
Thank you. Can you provide the copy to the clerk? Thank you. Counselor Richter?
Yes, I have three motions here. One is to refer the 10th Avenue 196A Street delegation to staff for a report on whether or not we can collect the money now and build the road later, or to make sure that there are some sort of mechanisms put in place to reduce crime in that area. The second one, so do we need a motion on that?
I'll second the referral.
Yeah, so you're referring it to the delegation. That's a motion to refer. Counselor Long seconds it.
I prefer not to put conditions on it. Let's refer the issues of the delegation to staff like our policy says.
Counselor Richter, is that?
Yeah, we refer it to staff. I mean, two suggestions came up that I'd like to get staff's input.
There was then any, anything else that staff come up with? All right, is there unanimous consent, or do you want us to be voted? I think by unanimous consent, we can, we can accept that. So, carry on.
The second one is to refer the 24th Avenue paving project to the 218th budget process.
There's a second to that. Counselor Arneson, so the 24th Avenue, the delegation regarding 24th Avenue, to refer that to the budget? So, if there's unanimous consent, we can accept that? Okay, CNO opposition will accept that as.
So, referring the delegation?
Yeah, we're referring that to the budget process. And the third one, Counselor Richter?
Yes, I'd like to put a notice of motion to reconsider motion number M1 from October 23rd, 2017, regarding future neighborhood plans. So, that is a notice of motion for the next meeting, and this motion is about doing booth, fern ridge, and ridge neighborhoods concurrently. fern ridge, and ridge neighborhoods concurrently in, uh...
Thank you. Any other business? Oh, I got some, oh, yeah, that's it for you? Okay, Counsel Long, I had you already. Counsel Fox?
No, I was, uh, with the Twenty-Fourth Avenue paving.
Okay. Any other business? Seeing done, Counsel Davis moves termination and seconded by Counsel Qualley. All those in favor? And carried.
Have a five-minute recess?
Yeah, we'll take five minutes, and then we'll go into public hearing.